I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, united in the world, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know. Councilor Rattus is here. There he is. Okay, announcements. Thursday, March 26, 7:00 p.m., in the James Master Cola Upper Elementary School All-Purpose Room, there'll be a special Town Council meeting, and I will give more details on how we're going to do that between the Town Council agenda and the Kinder Morgan informational meeting. I will have more specifics of that during the very beginning of the, of course, when I talk about Kinder Morgan. Thursday, April 9, at 7:00 p.m., here in the Matthew Thornton Room, there's a regular council meeting. On Tuesday, April 14, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., in the James Master Cola Upper Elementary School All-Purpose Room, is voting day. And Thursday, April 23, in the Matthew Thornton Room, is a regular council meeting. Eileen?
Okay. After much deliberation, the Parks and Recreation Department has decided to postpone this year's annual Easter egg hunt that was initially scheduled for Saturday, March 28 until Saturday, April 18. So it was going to be on the March 28, but now it's going to be on Saturday, April 18. The event will run from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Please contact the Parks and Recreation Department for specific details. Postcards have been sent out today to all residences and businesses, including regarding the special Town Council meeting with Kinder Morgan, and will be delivered in the mail within the next couple of days. I should've said that at the other place, but this is what they look like. That's it.
Excellent. Okay. The Kinder Morgan proposed not least energy direct pipeline project. Just want to let you know that in our attempt at writing, getting on the FERC site for the comment, it was very confusing. So what we did is we developed a how-to, step-by-step, how to access, how to register, wait for an email response, that gives you access registering and doing the comment, okay? So just to let you know that there is a separate access information, which hopefully will make it easier. We have been told that FERCs really like digital comments rather than the hard copies, so we would encourage everyone to do that. And again-
Is it on our town website?
On our town website. Yes.
So if you're like me, I would suggest that you print out the instructions and then go back and follow them.
And just to let you know, the Town Council during the last meeting had voted to send a letter, a comment, and we did. We've officially, as a council, submitted that for the scoping meeting. And again, just to reiterate, we really want to be able to have a scoping meeting here in Merrimack. We encourage all people, all residents, to be able to access that comment sheet on the website through the instructions and request that a meeting be held here. FERC is the entity that we really need to be able to push to give them the information and what we feel about in this town, okay? Kinder Morgan can answer questions, the informational meeting that's going to happen on March 26. They're not going to get into the debate, at my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is there an energy need or not, all that kind of debate. That's the FERC. So that's the kind of information we should really access for that. So that's why we wanted a scoping meeting here, okay? Okay, I'm also going to be referring to the potential council action items. The list, there are a lot of completed items on the action list, and I'm not going to go through those. I'm just going to go through the active items, okay? 129 was when we instituted, continue to press Kinder Morgan for the public meeting, and this is where I want to talk about how we're going to proceed. We are going to hold it, obviously, at the James Master Cola Upper Elementary. We're going to have a Town Council meeting, starting there. We're going to have our meeting start there. Convene at 7:00. Then we will recess at approximately 7:15.
Forty-five.
I'm sorry, sub- that was a short meeting. 7:45.
Under your leadership, we can do that.
Well, no. Don't test me. 7:45, which will allow time for Kinder Morgan to come in and finalize their prep. There will be a presentation, informational presentation by Kinder Morgan from eight, I'm sorry, from 8:00 to 10:00. Right, they only have a 15-minute presentation, from what we understand, but we're going to have it from 8:00 to 10:00. That is going to be moderated by Lynn Christensen, who is a very effective and experienced moderator. That has been accepted by Kinder Morgan. After the meeting, the informational meeting, we are going to reconvene the Town Council meeting, and then we'll have a discussion about the informational meeting, okay? So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood what the agenda's going to be that night. Any questions from anybody about the agenda?
Nancy, are you going to restrict who can talk at that meeting or ask questions, or how are you going to-
Thank you for reminding me. That's perfect. We have, Eileen, the Town Manager, has requested that all Town Departments try to write up questions that they want to ask Kinder Morgan at the meeting, to try to have concise questions, have them, not repetitive, so that they're going to be the first people who are going to be allowed to ask questions. Then the Town Council is going to be able to ask questions. Then Merrimack residents only. After that is that the, if there's enough time, non-Merrimack residents can ask. Thank you for reminding me, Tom. Okay, any other? Okay. Okay, the next, everything else is, a lot of it's ongoing, there's nothing new. Request KM list of abutters notified of project and request for permission to survey. Eileen, can you address that?
Could we just do the one under engaged Avatar on 129? That's the statement of work.
Sure, okay.
Okay, Paul?
Two weeks ago, I handed out and sent an email about the statement of work letter for Avatar to look at doing evaluations and values for the town, just wondering if the council had any other further comments.
And that's to assess effect on property values?
Yeah, our property values on, with the pipeline. If anybody has any comments, questions on that letter? If not, I will be-
Quite a while ago.
About two weeks ago. That's that one right there, yeah.
That's it?
Yeah. But I also emailed it to everybody.
It was emailed, yeah.
Yes, I emailed it to everybody also.
Because you want to be able to-
I want to be able to engage Avatar sooner, in the next week or so.
You ever done, I don't have a problem with that.
Can I see the letter?
No.
Tom has a copy, I'll go see it.
Tom, do you have a-
I have copies for everybody.
Okay, could you?
Avatars are, for the public, Avatar is our contract assessor, and we-
Anyway.
And we have asked them to do a number of things, but primarily to look at interstate national, natural gas transmission pipelines, to see if there have been value changes on properties throughout the country, to look at the actual, not what somebody implies or infers that, that happened, but they're going to actually go to a town or an area and see what the property values were before and what they were after.
Now, do we need an actual motion or just agreement? Okay.
Just a head bump?
Head bump. Any negatives? I know, you need a minute, Bill, right?
Madam Chair, a question for Paul.
Right ahead.
First bullet point, Paul, where it says, please look at interstate national, natural gas transmission pipelines, and the assessed value for the last 10 years, if there's not enough data to form a clear and concise opinion, then you may expand your search for up to 20 years. What is your, what's the focus going to be? And are we looking at surrounding communities? Are we looking at comparable data of other communities in the United States that are impacted that, that meet the same demographic requirement as Merrimack?
I don't know how many pipelines have gone in in the last 10 years, to be perfectly honest with you.
Okay.
So what I was giving them is some scope. I think there should be enough pipelines in the last 10 years for them to make a concise opinion on the information about values and how the values either went up, down, stayed the same for the last 10 years. If there isn't enough data in that timeframe, they can continue their search. I don't want them to go back the last 100 years and pull stuff out from 1909.
The years, the least, I'm talking about the geographics. Are we focusing on everywhere in the United States? Are we focusing on New England?
The whole United States.
The whole United States. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You all set, so? Okay, I guess you got the nod. Okay, so now we can talk about KM list of abutters notified of project.
Yes, I spoke to the person that is in charge of going around and getting survey permission from various people, and she explained to me that she could not give me a list of the abutters that, that Kinder Morgan has come up with. And so I sent an email to her boss, and he said that he could not either, and I have confirmed that they cannot.
Legally, they can't.
FERC does not allow them to release the information of the abutters that they have identified.
Is there any other method that we could get the information other than asking for the abutters to contact us? Although the purpose really was to compare, wasn't it?
Make sure they had it ready, because there were statements made that people had not been notified who were in the direct, you know, area who should have otherwise been.
One of the things that had been brought to my attention at one of these meetings by the neighborhood groups was that there are two instances of the various neighborhood groups owning communally, owning a piece of property. And I spoke to the woman who was doing the, what is her name?
Quinn.
Yeah, Patty Quinn. Spoke to Patty Quinn and made sure that she knew that she had to go and contact all of those people from the Scott Avenue area and also from Whittier Place Avenue. And she said she was aware of those parcels, and she was trying to gather the proper information.
Okay, the remaining action, I, yes, Tom?
When I read the eight or nine-page memo from FERC to Tennessee Gas, it seemed to allow the release of lot numbers as not being privileged like names would be. So that's another possibility to attack that particular issue.
Let me look at that, because it was, it was kind of confusing as to whether or not they were allowing or not allowing that, but-
It was an, you can't, you can mark them privileged if there's names on them, but if there's not, you can, you can use lot numbers, and you don't, and you don't have to mark them privileged.
So I could call them and ask them for lot numbers?
Based on what I read there, yes.
Okay, I'll do that.
Because they've got to provide that. They've got to provide that list to FERC with their application.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll find out.
Okay, the remaining items are either completed or on an ongoing basis, for example, supporting Merrimack Village District and the Conservation Mission, Conservation Commission, for example. So there's nothing new to add. At this point, I'll take any public comment on the Kinder Morgan.
Good evening, Deborah Huffman, 60, Amherst Road. Three quick things. First of all, Paul, when you, when you send that letter to Avatar, please be sure that they include comparable. I think Bill was sort of getting at that. It's one thing to put a pipeline through a farm in the Midwest, quite another to put it through backyards of an upscale neighborhood. So just make sure that whatever they compare really is comparable to what we have in Merrimack, okay? Two more things. One, you folks being town leaders, it really matters what comes out of your mouth in these meetings. People believe you. It's very, very important that what you say is as accurate as you can make it. We all make mistakes, we're going to make mistakes, but when you can, just be as accurate as possible. And there's two things in particular I'm looking at. One is people still, because Kinder Morgan did such a great job of hammering this home all year, they believe it's going to be under the power lines. I can't tell you how many times I've heard that, from people who even know about it, they have the impression it's under the power lines. That's just not true. In Kinder Morgan's own words, "Bill, you were in Milford, you sat in the row behind me, you heard me ask the Kinder Morgan man. It's not, not even one foot, zero feet, under the PSNH power lines. It's not. It's an entirely separate easement, entirely separate parcel, you know, swath of trees to be cut down, hopefully next to the PSNH lines, I guess hopefully, it just makes that much wider." But people still think it's not a big deal, it'll be under the power lines. You heard the answer straight from Kinder Morgan when I asked the question, and it's in their filing, zero feet of the PSNH easement. So if you can just kind of hammer that home when people ask you, because that's misinformation that's gotten really embedded in people's minds, you know, that PSNH is somehow going to profit from this. No, they're not. PSNH is on a unitile line. They're not getting one drop of this gas, they haven't signed up for it, only Liberty has. Unitiles with Spectra lines, you know, that's who they want. PSNH isn't, they're not benefiting from this, okay? So please, be as clear as you can with, with all the folks listening to you, it's not under the power lines. And number two, and last item, the other thing to be really clear about to people is being, voicing an opinion against the Kinder Morgan plan does not mean you're against natural gas. Since last year, when the governors did their governor report and the NESCO report and, and people were saying, you know, a year ago, we need more gas, there have been six proposals. There are six proposals sitting out there to bring us a load of natural gas. Kinder Morgan's just one of them. Kinder Morgan happens to be the worst proposal, because it's the only one of the six. That means digging up a whole new trench across our state. Kinder Morgan's the only one who's proposing doing that. Spectra and Portland Natural Gas, the other people doing these other proposals, they're using existing pipeline footprint, a much more acceptable way to bring natural gas into New England. If all six of these get approved, we will be swimming in natural gas, just swimming in it. It's ridiculous. It's okay to be against the Kinder Morgan proposal, because it is the worst choice of all of these six. It is the worst. It's okay. It doesn't mean if you're against Kinder Morgan's proposal that you're not in favor of bringing more natural gas to New England. There's bazoodles of gas coming to New England, based on the NESCO report and various other things. Spectra's dying to put their proposals through. Kinder Morgan, we don't have to support. It's the worst choice. And it's okay to say that. Doesn't mean that you're against business or you're against natural gas. It's okay to be against the worst choice, the only one that's coming across virgin territory, okay? So if you can just get through those facts to people, these are facts, these are not opinions, these are facts, and it would really matter if those words came out of your mouths, because frankly, people don't believe, folks who aren't a counselor or not an energy professional, no matter how much data you put in front of their face, or the Kinder Morgan filing and put it in front of their face, somehow they don't believe us. But they will believe you. So I ask for you to be as honest as you can with your constituents and make sure they understand, there's lots of proposals out there, and there's not under the power lines. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Hi, Amanda Yonkin, 57, Attica Creek Road. I just wanted to clarify that denying permission is not the same as not participating. Stakeholders who've chosen to deny permission to survey can still file to be an intervener once Kinder Morgan puts in their application. Many Merrimack residents, as well as several other New Hampshire towns and Massachusetts towns who have legal representation, have denied permission to survey, and they're absolutely participating in the process. Councilor Dwyer, in the last Town Council meeting, you commented that you felt bad for the town of Milford because they denied permission and that they let their emotions get in the way. Again, it was mistakenly implied that by not allowing to survey, they will be left out in the cold, and I don't think that's fair to the townspeople that are trying to make their own decision if they should allow survey, if they're thinking that means not participating. So I would just ask for you to clarify to the public that not allowing survey does not exclude you from participating in the FERC process. And then I just had one point I wanted to clarify. Chairman Harrington, on the first page of the meeting minutes, you had, were, in their draft minutes, that's why I just wanted to clarify, it said scoping meetings are not a requirement. So I, I know it's not a requirement to be in Merrimack, but are you saying that scoping meetings in general are not a requirement in the process?
My understanding is it's not automatic to have scoping. They could, the FERC does not, is not required to have scoping meetings, was my understanding. We were told they probably will-
Okay.
-because of the complexity of the project and all the rest, but, but that's accurate, they're not required.
But they're not a requirement, okay.
But they, the sense is they will, and our push is to have it here.
Okay.
Just to be able to respond, I'm not sure, maybe you want to respond, but I don't. God, I just went brain-dead. Repeat again, what was the comment that you said to Dan, because I had a response?
Oh, it was coming out of the minutes where he said that he felt bad for Milford because they let their emotions get in the way and denied the survey.
Okay. I think one of the things, because I've had to speak to some people as well, in terms of a misunderstanding related to what we're doing and how that has an impact on individuals, and I'll speak for me, I'm not even going to speak for the council. My impression was that there was no inhibition to intervenor status, it just put us in good stead for it. But the main reason was, and that's why we're voted to have the survey done, is that it makes it clear right now, those things within our property, environmentally or not, things that need to be known, because if it becomes aware, if they become aware, we all think of this well, let's say you have a well, and you don't let the survey people on, which certainly is your right, and they don't know there's a well there, or whatever kinds of things are there, and it gets later into the process, and, okay, they're going to go that way, no, you can't, there's a well there. Well, I didn't hear about this. It was not documented anywhere in the official paperwork. And so that was my sense. It wasn't a matter of having to, but just be, just be aware of the pros and cons. That's one of the pros.
Absolutely.
Okay? And also the, and there are cons, too. I mean, I think that's reasonable as well. But that was my memory of that discussion, okay? So it wasn't a blanket statement, and that, again, that's why we've gotten an environmental attorney, because we wanted to be able to have an informed decision. And that's what we came to conclusion of and why.
And I just think we need to appreciate that other people who also have other legal opinions are going the other way, looking at the fact that Kinder Morgan looks at the percentage of people that have allowed surveys, and that does count as something.
That's one of the cons.
So, yeah. So I was just, I would just ask that we could either share the pros and cons with the public or at least make sure they understand that one doesn't necessarily mean the other.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
To clarify that, if, if someone says no, and then two years later, you are technically correct, that you then may have a voice, but my opinion, and from what I've gathered from the attorney and other documents, that opinion may not carry as much weight as the person who did participate.
Correct.
That's the difference. So I stand by what I said. You are much better off legally to be against it, so you could say, I'm against the pipeline, however, I will participate in the bureaucratic and legal process, but I'm against it, but I'm with you to the, to the end legally, et cetera, versus someone who says, I'm going to fight you to the end, two years later, then I want to call and make my letters, yes, you'll be heard, but you carry no weight anymore. The process legally has passed you by. That loss, has, has, has less weight. These are what the experts have filled this body with, with the information. We're paying someone to gather this information that way.
But if they're participating from the beginning, is that still the case?
Yes, if you're participating from the beginning, then that gives you more weight two years down the road, because you've got the information, you've been, you've been supplied the survey information, versus someone who has fought it, fought it, then eminent domain comes and go into extremes. But at that point, now you start involving yourself in the process, but you carry no weight anymore.
But they wouldn't be able to participate. They have to file as an intervener, just like you guys will have to.
That's right.
So if they do that, how would that be any different?
It legally carries less weight.
How so? Can you, can you just-
It's not a debate night, so you have your public comments.
No, I'm not debating, I'm asking a question.
That, if I could-
Sure.
That's the kind of information we have been guided upon. And I also, I understand, they're countering legal opinions.
Absolutely.
So I think, I mean, which is your issue.
Yes.
That's both sides known.
Just as a councilperson speaking, exactly. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Hi, Michelle Watson, 21 Whittier Road. I just have a couple of questions. There was a group of us that sent an email to the council a month or so ago with a list of questions, and we only had one outstanding that we haven't heard back from, and it had to do with impact studies from each of the town departments, and we didn't know if that had been addressed yet.
That, impact studies per se, Eileen?
We don't have, we don't have a lot of information as far as us being able to do certain kinds of studies. So for instance, if we wanted to know, can the fire department handle XYZ? We don't know what the XYZ is, we don't know how far the valves are, we don't know how deep the, the, you know, where it shuts off, who shuts it off, and all those kinds of things. So what, what we're going to do tomorrow, as Councilor Harrington just said, we're going to get together those departments, the fire department, the police department, MBD, the sewer department, and, and all the various departments that are involved, to ask those kinds of specific questions, so that they can then go back and analyze their capabilities.
Okay, I must have, I walked in a few minutes late, so I may have missed that part.
I didn't say that, no.
Thank you. And then just two things for the town website, really happy that a lot more is up on there. One is, though you have to go to where it says Kinder Morgan to see the announcement for the meeting. I don't know if it could be moved, you know, we had deliberative session up there before, if it could be moved up. And also maybe a definition of what a scoping meeting is and why it's so important. I mean, we're telling everybody, please write in, they don't know what it means, so.
We are going to be having, like the police department's going to have it on their side?
Mm-hmm. That'd be great.
That kind of thing, too.
But we need, they need to know what it is.
What.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's move on. Okay, any other comments from the press or public?
Steve Tomaso, 146, Busch Lake Road. Let's go on a little different direction from the Kinder Morgan here. A couple of times I have been here over the months, and to discuss a noise issue that we have in town, and specifically, it's about noisy male birds, be more specific, roosters. I have asked this council to develop a noise ordinance or modify an existing ordinance, and I haven't heard anything for the couple of months, and I'd like to know what the status of it and how we're going to do it.
Eileen, Dan, go ahead.
We did, we, we took a vote, and we voted not to make an action on it. And I'm sorry, it's not the answer you wanted to hear, but we, we did give an answer. We thought about it long and hard, and we studied it, and we concluded- We, we thought about it long and hard, and we studied it, and we concluded that we did not want to take any action. Again, I apologize, it's not the answer you wanted us to take, but we did contemplate it.
Ally?
It was, that, that vote was taken after receiving, like, the, like, the one-page report, guidance from the town attorney, and the difficulties that many of us already believed were there, and, and he, in fact, did explain, and how difficult it would be to have an ordinance to enforce it. And with multitude of things, and, and that, I mean, I could get you the list, I don't have it with me tonight, but that's, you know, that was really, it was, it's almost an impossibility to do, and I think there was one community that had it, I believe, is what they, they had told us also.
So I have been told by an acquaintance in town that my neighbor is already planning to get his next flock of roosters. So you're saying that this summer coming, I'm going to have the same issues that I had last summer? And there's nothing I can do about it. One of the recommendations from the council was to sell my house. Well, between selling the house, the fees, and so on and so forth, that's multi-thousand dollars that I can't afford. One of the recommendations from the council was for me to bring up a lawsuit, again, multi-thousands of dollars, days out of work, I can't afford that. We're talking about a rooster that has about $6 worth of meat on it.
I get it, and, and with our discussion in the past, I had asked you, and, if you'd had difficulties, you said you in fact had, and to me, it seemed like a neighborly dispute that really is impossible for us to settle for a specific instance, when what we're putting forward in an ordinance or something would have to cover the whole town. And so it was, it was virtually, it was virtually impossible, it was extremely difficult, if not impossible, to put something together appropriately. And that's why, I don't remember anybody telling you to move, and they maybe did, I don't remember that.
Nope, one of council members did say to me, move.
Okay, but I do remember that the offering up of a civil thing, if it's destroying your life, it sounds like you have something to take forward, and that's sadly, possibly the only, you know, course that you might have. And, and I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know that, you know, the detail of that.
I'll tell you what, since I've been told that he is, my neighbors are going to be getting another flock of roosters, if that's what they call them, and they start at 5:15 in the morning, how about if I call each one of you up at 5:15, 6 o'clock, I come knocking on your door, right? So you can see the kind of aggravation that some of us neighbors have. We have elderly couples that are in this town, they're afraid to come over here and talk to you about roosters that they have their neighbors on, because they're afraid of the repercussions, because they're literally afraid of their neighbors. So when the roosters start crowing at 5:15 in the morning, I'm going to call each and every one of you up. Thank you for your time.
Any other? Yes, Paul?
I just want to jump back to the Kinder Morgan postcard.
Absolutely, yeah.
This will be posted as of 12:00 AM, right, midnight tonight, 12:01. This will be on all three of the town channels, and it'll be running until the meeting. So we'll also get that out to the public that way, that it will be on our town channels.
Thank you for remembering that. Absolutely.
Good evening, Kristy Bradshaw, 54 Whittier Road. I'm going to dovetail on something that Amanda said. She's talking about the concern that you're giving a misconception to residents about the survey situation. And I understand the logic, it, it doesn't feel good still to let them come on our land. But I think the, the greater concern is that at this point, the council hasn't made a stand for or against the pipeline. So it's very confusing to us what direction you're going. And from the start of myself coming into this, it has been, we don't have enough information, we haven't heard from Kinder Morgan, we're waiting for our public meeting. So my understanding is our public meeting with Kinder Morgan is on the 26th. And my question to the council is, will you be taking a stand for or against the pipeline once we have that meeting?
My answer is perhaps. I don't want to guarantee one way or another. Is it something that I'm looking for more information, that might be filled in that night? Yeah, might be. But I don't want to promise you something I can't guarantee for this council, but, but you're absolutely right. Part of our hesitation about anything is, regardless of whatever the vote is, if we were to take a vote, we're still active participants to the end. Okay, that's one thing I think we can all agree to. We have to be part of the process. But a positional thing would have to be in the benefit of the town, and that's my response, is that I'm waiting for that meeting, I want more information. I'm not, any of the other, go right ahead.
So Nancy just answered you as the chairman of the town council, and you asked the question about what the council's position is. My personal position as one member of the council is to oppose the pipeline. But, at the same time, I echo what Nancy said. I have no idea, no, no plan at all of sticking my head in the sand and telling them to go away, don't talk to me, I'm not interested. What I want to do is get all the information I possibly can, make sure they have all the information they possibly can about the condition of Merrimack, the condition of the area they want to go through, and the impacts that that impact would have. Because simply saying, I don't want it, and, and not talking to them anymore, is not going to resolve anything, and it's not going to move FERC. So me, as one counselor, I'm opposed to the pipeline.
Thank you, that's good to hear, because.
And we'll do what we can to make sure that FERC gets all the information they need to decide intelligently whether or not it's appropriate to go through Merrimack.
I do appreciate that response, and it, it feels good to hear that, to hear that you're opposed to it, because I think as residents, we're really concerned the direction that this is going in. And I appreciate that you're going to work with the system that we've been given to go through this process. But I'm confused about what you're hoping the end result is.
I guess I could.
If it doesn't come through.
You are hoping that?
Yes.
That's great to hear. Really, it's great to hear, that's what, we don't want this in our town. We don't want another root in another part of town. This isn't right for Merrimack. And I think the residents of Merrimack want to hear that that's how you feel too, and you're going to do what you need to do to make that a reality, within your powers.
Good, Dan.
Yeah, and, and I echo the sentiments of my colleagues regarding the, the issue, okay? As it's presently proposed, it's unacceptable. There's a whole bunch of other things that are going on in here, that the impacts are significant. But you have to keep in mind that the process is designed with this in mind. And so, in very many instances, unless we can demonstrate significantly that this process, that this pipeline does not comply with the National Environmental Protection Act, okay? That's, that's not exactly what the acronym is, okay? Policy Act, it's National Environmental Policy Act. The more we can demonstrate that it doesn't meet the National Environmental Policy Act, makes it a stronger case that the pipeline will be blocked. Okay? And this community has the biggest pile of stuff from border to border in four and a half miles than in most of the other towns combined, over the whole stretch of that, okay? Whereas, I said to my colleagues this evening, we're the Chinese wall at this point. Because we have agrofar issues, we have well issues, we have sensitive environment issues, all the, all these things that feed into that National Environmental Policy Act. So from the way that it's currently aligned, the way it's currently proposed, okay, it's unacceptable. And so we're going through with the, with the Conservation Commission has retained their consultant to update their, their studies that they did, the inventories that they did for, for sensitive environments and endangered species, and, and the other pieces that, the work that we did for, for Horse Hill, to put, to do that inventory. So, but that isn't going to be done until probably July, August, that's how long it's going to take. All right, so it, it's not that easy, and, and the issue here, a lot of times, is, you know, up to a point, we have a say, up to a point, we can try to influence the outcome, but in the end, the way that it's structured, the decision is made at the federal level as to whether or not this gets approved. So we can't sit here and say, you know, it, we're going to stop it, because we can't say that. We're off, we're, we're writing a check we can't cash. Okay? Because we don't know that. And what we have to do, and why we're taking the stance that we've been taking all along, is that we want to make sure that they know where every blessed piece is. And taking, and so that when it gets in front of FERC, they see the whole picture, and they can see the whole context of what this pipeline is going to be in, and make up their, make up, make a more, hopefully a more informed decision about whether or not they're going to issue this certificate.
Thank you. Just in response to that for one moment, if I may. My concern is that we're showing them certain areas of Merrimack that aren't okay to go through, but are we leaving the door open to say Merrimack is still acceptable, or accepting of a pipeline coming through it, if it avoids these specific concerns? And I don't know that.
Yeah, well, first, Lon. You're down there first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, Lon.
That's exactly a conundrum. Nobody asked Kinder Morgan to show up with a 36-inch pipeline through Merrimack. They're here, and as Tom Mayan has said very, very well, the process is what it is. This counselor does not see much immediate benefit to the town of Merrimack through the use of any of the gas through the pipeline. I see a lot of reasons to oppose disrupting the conservation area. The Merrimack Village District, of which I'm a commissioner, has sent a letter to FERC opposing the pipeline in terms of the disruption it may cause to our wells and wellhead protection area. And I think that's where I sense the process is at this moment. My belief is, taking a vote no at this point in time is a rather easy thing to do. But I'm not sure it has any real benefit, and I'm not sure that it would be accepted by all of the members of the community, and I'm talking broadly. We have businesses who have goals and aims that perhaps are counter to a direct no. So it, it, it is a very difficult problem. I appreciate your angst, I appreciate your request, and I won't speak for the council, there may come a time when at least a qualified no is deemed the right position, and I don't believe tonight is the right time. And I hope, I beg your patience with that.
Yes, I wasn't thinking tonight was the right time, I just was questioning if in the future, I was thinking, the Kinder Morgan meeting was the meeting that we were kind of all waiting to hear the other side. So I didn't know if there is going to be a point in the future that that may be the case. And I appreciate all that you're doing and your responses, thank you.
Dan wanted to say something?
I just quickly want to say that, that it sounds like a cliche, but there was a time, there's a time and a place for us to act that way. And just like you and everybody in the audience, we've been doing the homework too. So for us to make a comment like that, a big no, a month ago or a week ago, was not the time and place. And whether it's no or yes, that, that date's coming very quickly. And so March 26 on the calendar is going to be a big night, whether that, that's the night that it happens, or a week after, my, my feeling is, it's coming very soon. So you'll, you'll hear that response from us. But leading everything that's happened over the last three months to tonight, it hasn't been the time or place for that public announcement, but it's coming. Okay?
Yes?
Hi, Wendy Thomas, Wildcat Falls, 10 Wildcat Falls. I actually just have a statement, it's not a question this time. Last Friday, we had a gas leak over in, in Merrimack, and it was kind of interesting, it was over near the liquor store, oh, the liquor store, and.
People were upset.
People were upset, yeah, yeah, people were upset.
I gotta go to the liquor store.
They, they, they shut down Dobson Way, which is that little sort of access road, they evacuated some neighborhoods, or a neighborhood, I believe. And the way it was detected is people smelled the gas, people, I heard reports, people driving on Route 3 smelled the gas, people were actually on, Dana Webster, on the other side of Route 3, they smelled the gas. That's how they detected this leak. I spoke with the fire chief today, it was a one-inch pipe, it was a one-inch pipeline that, that had the leak. I just want to remind everyone that this Kinder Morgan pipeline we're talking about is a 36-inch pipe filled with odorless gas. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay. No recognitions, resignations, or retirements, we have appointments. Annual review with the Highway Safety Committee, per town of Merrimack, charter section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Highway Safety Committee. This agenda item is highlight, is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act on. Chief Doyle.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the council, Town Manager Kevin L, Chief Financial Officer Macally. Thank you for having me tonight to talk with you quickly about going over our annual activities for the previous year regarding the Highway Safety Committee, and some of the things we've been able to accomplish, and some of the things that still sit on the table. I just want to quickly go over who our members are. Myself, Kyle Fox from the Department of Public Works, Michael Currie, the chief of the fire department, Tim Thompson, representative from Community Development, Fran LaRue, citizen, Bob LaRue, citizen, Bill Godfrey, citizen, new member, Finley Rothaus, town council representative, Glenn Wallace, citizen, Paul Kneecza, citizen, and Tom Tussaud, representative from the Merrimack School District. We had three meetings last year, on May 8, June 9, and October 28. We unfortunately recognized the passing of one of our committee's lifelong members, Norm Peppin, I think you all remember Norm, and he still remains in our thoughts and prayers to this day. Three members of the Highway Safety Committee were reappointed in May, Paul Kneecza, Glenn Wallace, and Fran LaRue. And our newest member, William Godfrey, who took over Norm Peppin's vacated seat, was brought in and introduced to the membership in our October meeting. The Highway Safety Committee minutes should be all updated, and I believe Claire Rio, who's our department's administrative assistant, has been responsible for doing that. She's been working closely with Chuck Miller and Paul Trepani, our in-house IT guy, to make sure that that gets done on the new website, which is working out very well for us, by the way. Some of the issues we covered, including one which had been out there for a long time, actually about a year or so, the Chapel Lane parking issue, where folks were using the Wheeler Chapel for meetings at night, and there were some parking issues along the fence line behind the church. What we had and have been able to do is had Chief Currie take a look at the matter and realize that it's an issue that can be best handled by the folks at the church, not necessarily meaning that we need to install parking signs and create new ordinance issues relative to parking or restricting parking. We have worked closely with the folks at the church, we sent them a letter and suggested that they do so by making some arrangements in that they can place some cones out there during the times that they have their meetings to let folks know that they're not to be parking there, so that the folks who live on Chapel Lane can actually back out of their driveways now without having to worry about hitting cars. And that has worked out very well, we sent a nice letter to the folks at the church asking for, or I say asking for their cooperation, but thanking them for their cooperation. We are continuing to monitor the situation, make sure that they're doing all that they can to make sure that that issue does not become an issue in the future. We have a concern on Wilson Hill Road, we had a serious accident there last year, and one of the residents up in that area had asked that we either make some suggestions relative to road improvements, or signage, or a combination of both. That's an ongoing issue that we'll be addressing on our March 20 meeting, which is coming up in just a couple of weeks. Kyle Fox has been working closely with the resident, who will be invited to that meeting to talk to the membership about his concerns, and I think we're all aware of that issue at the Wilson Hill Road where it has a dangerous S-curve, but it actually inclines going west and declines coming eastbound. There is a problem out there, and we're continuing to monitor that as well. We're going to have the resident come in on our 20th, our March 20 meeting to speak with us, and let him tell us from a firsthand perspective what his concerns are. are. We addressed townwide handicap access issues. We were advised by the State Committee on Accessibility that several locations in town were not adhering to the requirements for accessibility. We notified those locations through a joint letter from the Highway Safety Committee and actually asked our friends at the Community Development Department and the Building Department through the Fire Department to go ahead and contact those businesses and locations to make sure that signage was appropriate, that accessibility issues were addressed, and they have been, they've been brought up to speed, and we are continuing to monitor that. It's been a little bit more difficult this year because of the inherent snow problems that have the parking lots where signs had to be moved and moved back and forth. But we're making sure that we're doing all the we can to make sure that the folks know exactly what it is from an educational perspective, what they have to do to be compliant, and certainly giving them the flexibility to make sure that they can get it done in a reasonable period of time, given the snow concerns. There was the issue that it seems to either have been resolved or still up in the air, and I'm not quite sure where that stands right now with the Madeleine Bennett Drive and Merrimack Middle School driveway intersection. We had the opportunity to speak to the developer and his engineer in May. We had, I had a meeting with members of the school district just prior to our June ninth meeting, invited them to our June ninth meeting to hear the proposal from the developer and his engineer, which included a stop sign arrangement that was given to him to bring before the Highway Safety Committee from the Planning Board for their blessing in terms of a safety recommendation, if you will, or whether the recommendation that was being proposed was compliant with all that we needed to hear from about the, the issues regarding safety concerns, from the ingress, the egress, the buses, the traffic and whatnot. Well, we had an opportunity to speak at length about that and it was approved by the Highway Safety Committee as it was submitted to the Planning Board and went back to the Planning Board. Since then, there have been several iterations of designs and whatnot that I think are still kind of out there pending, even though there have been some resolution to it. It is not...
It's been resolved.
It has been resolved, okay. But nothing has been brought back before the Highway Safety Committee, nor hasn't been recommended by the Planning Board to do so. So until which time something else comes up, then I think it has been put to bed. There was a signage request at Merrimack Christian Academy out in the west end of town off of Boston Post Road that at least the initial request came in from them to put a traffic light up regarding the, the traffic issues that they have. They have quite a bit of student, I say representation, but a student enrollment down there, two hundred and about three hundred students. And they wanted to know if there was something that needed to be done from our end at least, and they had been talking with Kyle quite extensively about the possibility about including a traffic light down there. When he spoke with them, it was fairly easily determined that a traffic light wouldn't be necessary, that instead they were going to post it through signage. The types of signage that you see, we call them home plate signs that indicate that there's a school coming up and there may even be a school zone issue that Kyle's going to be working with them to determine whether that we actually need to qualify it as a school zone. And that determines not only enrollment but traffic counts in the area, and I think that's something that we'll be discussing at our March twentieth meeting as well. We had the suggestion by one of the Highway Safety Committee members that the no turn on red sign at the end of the off-ramp northbound at exit twelve onto Bedford Road be removed. I don't know if you recall.
I noticed it's been removed.
It has been removed. And it was kind of an awkward, weird placement how it was on the post that was on the other side of the road against the guard rail, which is almost blocked by the post in the middle that said you couldn't make a left-hand turn if you were going on Bedford Road. So it was a little weird how it was placed. To make a long story short, that was put there many years ago at the time, just shortly after they designed, or not after they designed, but they built the bridge at the request, I believe, of the Highway Safety Committee way back. And it was only done so at, as a request. So what we ended up doing is we did some data digging to find out whether we actually need to continue to have that sign there. There have been no accidents, nothing that would warrant anything more so. We spoke to the folks at DOT who said that the line of sight is fall, or in Kyle from Department of Public Works, the line of sight concerns aren't a concern from a traffic safety perspective because they're all within certain acceptable parameters. So we took down the sign. We have been monitoring ever since. There have been no issues at all, even with the high snow banks, people are pretty cognizant. The ones who usually regularly use that area know that either coming over the bridge, they're going to be careful about the traffic coming out off of that off-ramp, or if you're at the top of the off-ramp, you're very careful about making that left look first before you turn right. There have been no issues. The one pending issue, which is the exit thirteen northbound off-ramp onto Ray Wazour Drive and/or down off onto Daniel Webster Highway, as you, that new one that was just built a few years back. We've been working very closely with the folks at DOT regarding some signage changes, which they've done. But it certainly still seems to be that there's an issue. If you all remember what the issue is about how that piece merges, where you've got the northbound traffic coming off the highway, and you've got that southbound and/or westbound traffic coming off of Ray Wazour Drive, which curls all the way around and then comes and dumps on the Daniel Webster Highway. There's a problem there and it's a huge line of sight problem because as it comes in and they merge, if you need to go to the right to go south on the Daniel Webster Highway, you've got to literally cut across two lanes of traffic that are coming off the northbound side. And it's almost, it's almost impossible unless you're actually watching over your right shoulder beyond that berm that obstructs that line of sight, becomes a real problem. And knock on wood, there haven't been any major problems out there yet. However, we're getting chronic complaints about how that is a dangerous intersection. DOT has changed, has changed the signs at a request, and they've been very, very good about our, our ability to contact them and communicate with them. And I've spoken since, since our last meeting in October, I've spoken with Dennis Lambert, who's coordinator in the area, and he said that we could actually go ahead at the request of one of the Highway Safety Committee members, maybe install some rumble strips along that section of the off-ramp. I say off-ramp, but it's the one as you come off of exit thirteen northbound. So it'll give people another heads up, like, oop, something's coming up, let's slow down a little bit. There are signs that are already there that are adequate and that are posted in a way that folks can get that information ahead of time. But I think the rumble strip might be a great idea. And that's an issue that we're going to be bringing up at our next Highway Safety Committee and meeting on the twentieth to talk a little bit more about it. And if it looks like that's something we want to move forward on, we'll be generating a memo to Dennis Lambert at DOT to ask them to see if they could look into that a little bit further. He certainly said it is something that's possible, and they have a similar situation up on exit five, I believe, off of eighty-nine where the road splits to the left and the exit goes off to the left to, I think, nine and two oh two.
Yeah.
There were rumble strips there.
Hawkins and exit two oh two to get on, head, head to Keene.
Right. And it's almost a similar situation where the road kind of merges. It certainly doesn't seem like there's that huge line of sight problem, but it gives people that heads up if they're coming off the highway that fast that something's happening fairly quickly.
I got ticketed there, I got...
So you didn't pay attention to that, huh?
It, it drops down to forty. It, it, it drops down to four. Full disclosure, nothing but straight talk over here, folks. No, it drops down to forty, so.
No, that's a, that's a, that's an interesting intersection.
Yeah, it is.
Chief, can I ask, has the state acknowledged that it's a danger? Have they actually admitted that their engineering, the way that they designed it was, is faulty?
They haven't. And they haven't because there's nothing...
That's on you, right? I mean, you're working with them, they're, and yet they've changed some signs. Why can't they say, we, we need to fix this? Because they haven't acknowledged that it's a problem?
You know, and I think that's a question best suited for them, and I, because I can't really speculate on what they're, how they determine whether it's dangerous or not. I mean, if you will look to just at the facts and the data about whether we had X number of accidents, or whether so many people were hurt or injured, or there was so much property damage as a result, you could say, oh yeah, it falls within what we would consider a dangerous intersection. But to my understanding, that data doesn't exist because those accidents haven't occurred. Now, does that mean, well, because the accidents haven't occurred, we turn a blind eye to it? Absolutely not, because I still think there is a huge issue out there. And they've been, to, to their credit, they've been very good about keeping that line of communication open.
They, they actually had offered, they did do the sign changes originally and had suggested they might be getting rid of the, the earth that's up against the, the fork there so that you could see a little bit better. But the chief knows, for me, it was a big beef with my old service vehicle because it had no windows on the right side, you know, the passenger door, but nothing beyond. And the first time I hit that, when it was open, I couldn't get to the right lane because I couldn't see anymore. I had gotten beyond that point. And I think the only fix is a yield sign, a distinct yield on that northbound exit ramp, yielding to the traffic coming from the other way. And that way you can get over in a safer way because those folks are supposed to allow you to, well, I don't know if they would, but it's, it is awkward, it's, it's difficult.
It's incredibly awkward. I did it tonight.
Did you? Yeah, yeah.
Pressed, pressed on the issue, they're going to tell you it was designed to standard.
Oh, and they have.
Because it's federal money.
They have.
And so the feds have looked at it, the states looked at it, and they got, they got the design manual and what they have to have for lines of sight and all the other stuff to go with it. And it complies. Okay, does it make sense? Not so much.
But the cheap fix is, you know, is a seventy-five dollar yield sign.
Yeah.
Because right now, the, the, I think the new wording of the signs that they changed was that if you're getting into the left lane, you have to yield, and if you're getting at the right lane, you have to yield. So you're still in the same situation of trying to fight two lanes of traffic. So we'll, we'll see what they do because I know that's...
And again, I can't, I can't say enough about the folks at DOT. We've had at least two meetings with them and I, he has contacted me, they've been very, very good, so as long as the lines of communication open, I see no issue where we can't get this matter resolved, I think, I think. And really, just to summarize, that's really it in a nutshell from the three meetings that we've had. We've got a few things that are still out there that are pending that we'll be discussing in our March twentieth meeting and moving forward. We'll be scheduling meetings throughout the year. The one thing that I did want to do is, just as I always do, is remind folks that if they do have any concerns at all, they can either contact any one of the members of the Highway Safety Committee or reach out to me directly at the Police Department through email or just make a phone call, and we're more than happy to listen to what it is that they have to say, maybe even invite them to one of our meetings.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just a comment, I'm, and I've talked with you about this same area before, Chief. What's the argument against having rumble strips on both sides of the roadway there?
Oh, I don't think there would be an argument at all. That would certainly be something we certainly, we would look into. I think we could actually chat about that at our Highway Safety Committee meeting on the twentieth and make a recommendation to DOT and find out what it is from, at least from their engineering perspective, whether there would be concern.
Because if you can't, if you can't scrape back the berm, and outside of what Council Rothaus says, which I agree, a yield sign, I think rumble strips make a lot of, makes a lot of sense. Because like Counsel Kane, we all, we all strain our necks.
Unless it's like Bill, it doesn't slow down.
Yeah. With or without rumble strips, it appears.
Is this going to be the National Guard of twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen?
Any other comments or questions?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
You might want to, they're, they're in a design to widen out the highway all the way up to that area. So that might be an opportunity or keep in mind that there's an op, there may be an opportunity there to try and do something with that as part of that project.
Good idea.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, public hearing, none. Legislative update from state reps, seen now. Town manager's report, I think.
The first thing I want to let you know is, I'm not sure, I, I know you've been getting inundated with emails lately, so I'm not sure that you necessarily read this particular one. But yesterday, I received a phone call from, from Mr. Waszuzik from the, I can't pronounce it, there's all kinds of letters that don't even make sense. But anyway, he is the administrator for the Bureau of Turnpikes. And the Conservation Commission had asked them if they would be able to purchase this piece of land, fifty-six acres over by where the Merrill's Marauders Bridge is, and the Sauhegan River goes down that way. At that time, they sent us back a letter and said no. So Mr. Waszuzik called me and said he wanted to let me know because we asked again if we could just get an easement along the Sauhegan River. And he wanted to let me know that the answer was going to be no, that we could not. But, so that was the bad news. But the good news was that in widening the turnpike, they're going to be disturbing some wetlands. And so they're looking for wetlands mitigation land. And toward that end, they, sometime in the, in the summer of two thousand and sixteen, they would anticipate either turning that whole parcel over to the town under the auspices or guidance of the Conservation Commission as wetlands mitigation land. So the answer is no today, but very likely in the, in the summer of two thousand and sixteen that we'll get the whole land.
Great. That's awesome.
Hey, don't get too excited because the legislature has intervened in these kinds of things before and just screwed them up. We want our money for this. We're going to give it to you? No.
It's mitigation.
Mitigation, that's right.
Wetlands mitigation. Okay.
That's right.
The planning staff is currently working with Anheuser-Busch on a building expansion on the Merrimack facility. We anticipate a submission of a site plan to construct three additions to the facility of approximately fifty-five thousand square feet total for warehousing, packaging, and brewing operations in the cup, in the very next few weeks. The planning board conditionally approved a site plan for Boomer McLeod, that's a good name, an auto, car audio retail installation, really?
I got an appointment with them next Monday to put my power wire in for my radio.
That's an excellent. To be located on Executive Park Drive, the facility will likely begin construction in the spring and will be approximately seventy-five hundred square feet located across from the former Merrimack Hotel. The new convenient M.D. urgent care facility on Dobson Way near exit eleven will hold a grand opening on March thirty-first, and you're all welcome to attend. The facility...
Our guest mask optional?
What's that?
Our guest mask is optional?
I do not know. But liquor is not optional.
It's nearby.
Right. So the facility will be open and start operations on April first. The Chestnut Hill subdivision, which is the old blood property, continues to be reviewed by the planning board, and the project will be on the planning board's agenda, as Tom knows, on April twenty-first. Manchester Bridge construction will be completed by the end of July of two thousand and fifteen. McGaw Bridge design is complete, pending review of the New Hampshire Department of Historical Resources. Bean Road is in the preliminary design phase. Sunset Shore Sewer Project construction bids are in and being reviewed, and construction should start this spring with completion of the project by the end of two thousand and fifteen. Wastewater Phase Two and compost facility improvements are currently under construction with the completion of the project by the end of two thousand and fifteen. I would like to update you on where the budget stands as the springtime approaches. We are currently twenty-eight thousand dollars overspent in overtime in the DPW Department, and our salt shed is about fifteen percent full. We believe that we have sufficient sand and salt to make it through the remainder of the winter. And that is it.
Do you want to make a announcement, or give information about the grant that we received? That's, that's good news, you want to be able to share.
No, that ties in with the other announcement.
Yep.
Right. I'm not, I don't have all the facts and figures in front of me, but we were recently informed that the, and Kyle Fox from DPW prepared this grant on behalf of the town and the Town Center Committee relative to the trail projects that they have outlined. And they, they received notification that they were going to get a five hundred and fifty-some-odd thousand dollar grant from the Transportation Alternatives Program. It's a federal program. And there's a twenty percent match of somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars. So what it will do is it will help to advance that, the trail project that is proposed to go underneath the Chamberlain Bridge and go forward over some of the, the wetlands where they might put in a pedestrian bridge and that kind of thing. But it'll give a real good boost to get that project underway.
The kids, Watson, right?
Watson Park, all the way up to...
Yes.
Yeah, Wildcat Falls?
Yeah.
Yeah, to the footbridge.
Footbridge, right.
So Kyle will be bringing that forward to you in the very near future.
That's excellent. Please tell him, congratulations. And thanks. Big money is right. It's going to be spectacular.
It, it shows you the impact that they feel that that project is going to have to be in a competitive environment like that and to get that size of a grant for that project. You know, how they, you know, the way they put it together, the purpose that they've been working on, and it's something we've been working on for, what, eight years now?
A long time.
And the previous investment the town's made demonstrates the seriousness.
And once again, sometimes these plans, a lot of times people say, this plan is sitting on the shelf and you're blowing dust off the plan and that kind of thing. Sometimes it really... Sometimes it really helps to have a plan that is ready to go. So the Town Center had a plan with proposed trails and, you know, have made efforts toward that end, you know, toward getting there piece by piece. And, you know, with the addition of the Slusway part and removing that, that four old dock that was, that was on the loading dock. And the improvements that are being made to Watson Park, it just, it, it all fits in nicely.
What's the adage? Good luck is preparation meeting opportunity.
That's right.
We were prepared, so it just came out. Okay, there is no consent agenda. All business. Paul, you're getting ready. Update on the James Mashcall Upper Elementary School security when used as a polling site, which is going to occur April fourteenth, town election. Yes, Paul?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. On March second, I attended the school board meeting for an update on the plans of the polling site to be at James Mashcall Upper Elementary School All Purpose Room. At the last meeting in September, the joint commit, uh, joint meeting on September twenty-ninth, a vote was taken to form a committee to include the police chief, the fire chief, myself, and Superintendent Chaffrey to go over possible alternatives to the upper elementary school All Purpose Room being used for elections. We looked at numerous sites in that campus. We looked at distance of parking lots, ease of access, handicapped accessibility. We came back with the conclusion that two of the sites, one site's parking was not sufficient for an election. One site's parking was far, too far away for some of the older elderly people to walk to get into the election facility. So we went back and started looking at the All Purpose Room. When we looked at the All Purpose Room, we looked at alternatives within the All Purpose Room. We looked at entering from the Smith, what they call the bowl, Smith Gym entryway there. We looked at entering off of School Street, that, where we normally exit out of the polling place, we looked at that. There's a little closet that sits to the right of the stage. We looked at maybe blowing out a wall on the back end and entering that way. But when we looked at the ground versus where the floor is, there was still that problem with the step up. We then discussed possibly leaving it at the school one more time and how can we approve what happened last time with some of the security issues that were brought forward by the school board. Principal McGill suggested that they are going to use a new drop-off and pickup procedure. They're going to use what the bowl, what they call the bowl, for us old timers in town, it's where our morning playground used to be. But they're going to use that as the pickup and drop-off location, way back when the buses used to drop us off there. And they're going to go in where the old principal's office was, by the Smith Gym and the library, and bring the kids in that way. Same thing with drop-offs. They're going to make an announcement to the walking students that the parents walk over to the bowl area to pick up their kids and walk them back to their cars. Then we discussed the doors being adjourned. Moderator Christensen was in the audience at the time, and we concluded that we'll leave the door shut unless somebody's entering or leaving the polls. And if it gets warm, the school has fans and we'll just bring in fans for the people, the workers, and the, for the polling place, and we'll just run fans. So the doors will not be open unless you're leaving or entering the polling place. Yes?
Which doors are those you were referring to?
Uh, by the dumpsters.
The exit doors towards Bishop Street?
The exit towards, towards School Street, Bishop Street, that, those areas, those doors
Okay, thank you.
Were adjourned. Then we talked about lunches. Right now, our election workers get a pass, they walk down the hall and have the hot, the hot lunch through the school for lunch. That was concern that people walking through the halls, election workers walking through the halls. I bring in, I, we, the town brings in dinner for the people at the polling, the election workers, to bring in lunch is just a little added burden on, on the town manager's staff, but we can do it. It's not going to cost us any more or any less than what we're already paying for. We, we pay for them to have lunch. It's just a little burden on the town manager's staff to bring in lunch that day. But we, I told them we could do that this way. And then we talked about student safety. And we reiterated, the chief reiterated that there are three policemen on duty at the polls. One sits by the principal's office, one sits by the entranceway into the All Purpose Room, and one patrolman, police officer, is outside. Crowd control for the people who are, the politicians who have their signs. There's crowd control for that to keep them separated from the people walking in to vote. We discussed that. We discussed barricades to funnel the people walking into the new elementary school. If you look at the elementary school, the new entryway of the principal's office is three doors. We barricade the left two doors with barricades going down towards School Street so that people would have to walk in to vote there. That third door, the far door to the right, would stay open for a parent bringing a child in or picking up a child out of school. Because as you walk in that third door, if you look immediately to your right, that's where the secretary for the upper elementary school sits to let people in and out, to come in through the door. There's a door, as soon as you walk in, there's the three doors, then there's a double door, and then there's, there's the principal's offices to the right. There's a door right there that will be shut and locked, that nobody will have access to unless they're, unless somebody from the principal's office opens the door and takes somebody, the per, the student in or out. We also talked about having a floater, a police officer. If somebody from the kitchen staff needs to walk to the Smith Gym or the middle school lunchroom, not the middle school, the upper, elementary school lunchroom, which is to the left of the Smith Gym as you're walking from the upper elementary to the, the middle school, elementary school. The, there's a floater there that will help the staff walk through. There is going to be a gate on that side that's locked, right after the bathrooms. And if they need to, they can open it, and there'll be a police officer there to make sure nobody has entry or access into the middle school that way. Talked with the principal, McGill, she's going to get with Chief Doyle and his staff and decide, do they need three or do they need four officers? As well as Moderator Christensen will be dealing with Chief Doyle on, on how many officers are needed for that day. They, the school board was accepting of the plan. They want to see it happen one more time. They want us to sit back after the elections and debrief and see how, how it went with the students interacting, or did they not interact? The one concern is the nurse. The nurse's office is literally between the All Purpose Room and that locked door. Suggesting the one extra officer, if there's a child that needs to go to the nurse's, he can call over the floater, say, hey, I got a child that needs to go to a nurse. They can walk the child over to the nurse's office, or somebody from the principal's office can walk the child over to the nurse's office. So the students will be one hundred percent supervised at all times with an adult teacher or a police officer in that area, if they need to go to the nurse. They want to debrief us after the fact, after the, the fourteenth meeting and see what went wrong, what went wrong and what has gone right with that. We'll be having a meeting. The last thing is, we talked about the handicap ramp. And Tom from their, Tom Tussow from the, the building department over at the school has mentioned that we definitely need, if you're going to go that route, we need to investigate it more to find out what's the best way to do that. Because it looks like it's about a forty-foot run. And then investigate whether it needs to be covered or not covered and other things. And come up with some kind of cost if, if that's how it needs to be done after, after these changes, if these changes don't, do not work. But I believe, and I believe the chief believes, that these changes would be sufficient to, to talk to the safety issues that were, and the concerns that were brought up at the joint meeting.
Thank you. Now, are there any questions? None being seen. Okay. Paul's staying because he's got the next one. April fourteenth, election advertising, Eileen Cabanelle and Paul McCalle to consider the increased use of promotional signage to advertise for the April fourteenth election in an attempt to encourage more residents to vote as discussed during the May sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen Town Council goal-setting session.
I can do it. Okay. On May sixteenth, as was mentioned, the goal-setting, one of the things was to get increased voter turnout. One of the items that we talked about is to use electronic signs. Basically, I went out, asked Adam to go out and find out how much it would cost to rent an electronic sign, three electronic signs. The cost is five hundred and eight dollars per week. If you have them for two weeks, three signs, it's about three thousand dollars. There's also a pickup and delivery charge of two hundred and twelve dollars per sign, which if we go this route, I'm sure we can get three pickup trucks to go up there and pick up the signs ourselves. So the cost is going to be about three thousand dollars for two weeks to rent three electronic signs. We talked about Bedford Road and DW Highway, down in that section of town. Amherst Road and Continental Boulevard, over by Burger King area, somewhere in there. And then DW Highway and Greeley Street, down by the Common Man, someplace near Matthew Thornton Cemetery in that area to advertise for the election. We're coming before you, it's a three thousand dollar expenditure to see what the council, if the council would like us to do this, or...
Do we need them for two weeks?
Well, our thinking for two weeks is that you can have them one way for one week. So for instance, if you're coming up
Okay.
Off the exit, you can have it, if you're coming up towards Burger King, you can have it that way. And then the next week, you can flip it and have the people coming down Amherst Road
Gotcha.
For the sign.
Bill?
Are we asking the Merrimack Police Department to use their sign board as well to advertise the election?
All, all the sign boards that are town-owned will be out. That includes our one electronic sign down by Watson Park. It includes the police station, it includes the library, it includes the, the fire station, the transfer station. And the MY.
And cable, of course, all that stuff too. Cable?
Yes, and cable, and cable.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Finley?
Goal-setting sessions are always exciting. And I get caught, caught up in the moment, and now I'm putting on the brakes. Putting on the brakes for me. But the biggest reason, I think, is because of what's on the ballot. I mean, I'd love for everybody to come out. No, I mean, it's not like the Highway Garage, we, we would want information out. We will want people to know about that and, you know, promoting that in some fashion would be more critical. I think the Public Works, you know, contract is definitely important. But I think people would be supportive of that. I'm having a hard time getting over thirty-eight hundred bucks.
No, I'm only kidding.
Then, would, would you entertain one week then? And do three, do three days and four, or four days in one direction and do the last three days leading up to the, and change, you know, don't forget to vote Tuesday, the fourteenth, and then the, with three days to go, don't forget to vote Tuesday. Something like that. Make it cheaper and one week may, may, may do it.
Yeah.
See, that, that was my thing. I thought two weeks was long.
Yeah? Make you, does that make you feel?
Much better.
Yeah?
I have the luxury of not having been to that goal-setting session.
They're always enjoyable.
But you do aspire to it, obviously.
It was at Swan's. It was at Swan's.
My, my question is, the concentration at the top of, at Amherst and Continental, and then five hundred feet at the bottom of the hill at Greeley and Route Three? It seems a little close to me. Or is that where all the traffic comes in and out of town?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's very-
There's a huge amount of traffic there, and, and they're going different directions. The folks going up and down DW Highway are not going to see anything up by Burger King, yet there's a ton of people that are coming up Amherst Road or going up Continental.
Thank you.
Yeah, but they could get snagged at Watson. Because if you're going, if you're going north, if you're going north up Route Three...
But you're missing one of the bigger condo associations by the old shaws. That's what we're trying to get, the condo association and the people on that road.
Except King Cone's opening up on the twenty-first, so I'm sure we'll have our King Cone ice cream signs.
I'm sure they'll put a vote sign up if we ask them to.
We could have, we could have a little mini subcommittee debating on locations to reel, to reel us in as far as the concept of doing something about electronic signing. You know, as a show of hands, is this a good thing, is this a good thing to do? You know what I mean?
I think you should be chairing.
No, thank you. So that's my thought. I'm, I'm for it. I'm, I'm for getting-
How many sandwich boards do we have?
How many what?
Sandwich boards do we have?
Apparently, one.
There's a few out there too. The more, the more boards and the more stuff out there, you know, it's all good. But to spend a little bit of money to get some more people to get more-
What does the Community Council Association, they've got, where do they get theirs?
Those kind of sandwich, the smaller ones?
Yeah.
We have probably three or four of them. Small ones.
I'm in the wrong business.
Instead of renting three, how about, we cut it down from two weeks to one week, instead of renting three, how about we rent two?
Eileen?
One of the main things that we have been talking about, since I've been here at least, is the very poor voter turnout in relation to the number of registered voters. And we have never really made a concentrated effort on trying to improve that. This gives you the opportunity to see if it works or not. The message board signs are far and away the best visible signs, rather than a sandwich board that could blow over, that looks unprofessional, that kind of thing.
Sort of screen it.
Right. So I did want to tell you that during these bridge projects, I have instructed Kyle Fox and Rick Seymour, I'll have to remind them again if you remind me to remind them, is that when we do the bridge projects, that we incorporate at least once, one, purchasing one of these electronic signs with each bridge. And that way, we get eighty percent from the state on that.
I know it's in McGaw, I know it's in the McGaw Bridge one.
So, Tom, did you want to say something?
Yeah, is this going to be a fixed sign, or are you getting electronic signs so that you can change the message during the day? Or is it going to be fixed at any given time?
It's going to be a, it's going to be a fixed message. Town elections, April fourteenth, James, J Muse.
Yeah.
And then as it gets closer, maybe, you know.
I just didn't want to see something that was changing every twenty seconds or something like that.
It's not going to be like a, it's not going to be-
That's against our ordinance.
That's against, I was going to say, that's against the ordinance, even though we're not governed by them.
No.
Well, that's for, that's for the hackers.
But no, it's going to be, it's going to be as, it's going to be like what we do down at Watson Park. It's the same size electronic sign, and it's going to say, you know. And if we have to flip over to say, at J, J Muse.
Yes, Eileen.
But anyway, my point was that even though we might have to rent them this year in order to, you know, in order to, to see if it works, next year, we will have our own.
Nice.
Whether they work.
So, so I guess the decision is one or two weeks. Paul needs to know. Yes, Bill?
Paul, why Greeley and DW as opposed to bringing it back up near the turnpike? Because conceivably, people getting on and off the turnpike, instead of going towards Greeley Street, could conceivably pick up Amherst Road and not see the advertising.
The reason why we chose Greeley and Amherst-
I'll share it.
Honestly, the reason why we chose it is because, uh, that portion from Greeley to Amherst Road is state-owned property. Continental, right after you take the left, uh, right after Greeley, if you take the left on DW by the Common Man, is town-owned property, and the same thing with Amherst Road, when, once you take the right, it's town-owned property. So, we didn't have to work, work with the state and try to get permission from the state to put the board on the state property. That's why we chose that.
See, there's a lot more to that decision.
Hmm. Then I guess the question would be, what objection would you have to putting the sign directly on Amherst Road to get all the traffic going in up Amherst Road, accessing Turkey Hill Road, et cetera, Meeting House?
What, what?
I'm just-
Uh, we, um, we could put it-
I was like a good subcommittee.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna believe it.
You know, we, we, we could put it anywhere we really want to as long as it's on town property.
Okay.
Or in our right of way on that.
Ma- Madam Chair, I would move that the town council authorize the town manager and or her proxy to sign the appropriate documentation for three signs for a one-week rental not to exceed, based on my arithmetic, two thousand dollars.
Is that a-
Works.
Works.
Two thousand dollars.
Second?
Second.
Bill Boyd being the first, seconded by Tom Kinick.
Why should I be seconded?
Self, self-serving, right, right?
The chairs already made a decision? Okay, any further discussion? Oh, it's the most discussion we've had tonight. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Seven, zero, zero. Oh, God, this is usually at the law-
It's gonna be ten o'clock.
Usually this is the attitude after a whole night. Okay.
Move minutes to February twenty-sixth.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Tom Mahan, seconded by Lon Woods. Revisions?
Madam Chair, I have a couple syntax issues that I'll just submit directly to Paul to save Counselor Dwyer any further answers or punctuation.
Thank you very much, Counselor Boyd.
Page four of nineteen, at the bottom, number forty-nine, number forty-nine. The last sentence that says, "The process is not designed for governing bodies of municipalities not to participate." I don't recall that wording. That sentence is not, I believe is what I said. I might have said, "The process wasn't, wasn't designed to have local governing bodies involved," but I'll-
You want to change that thing?
-just, so I need to strike, strike the sentence or in, or put in what I believe I said.
What did you believe you said?
I believe I said, "The process is not designed for local governing bodies to participate." Because then I, it is further stated correctly where I said, uh, is, the issue is between the Department of Energy and Kinder Morgan.
Okay, done deal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other changes aside from syntax? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? None against. Seven, zero, zero. Comments from the press? Saying none. Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Yes, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you two, my coun, counselor, council colleagues in the community. I just wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, recognize the Merrimack Tomahawks Boys Hockey Team. Uh, they're currently, uh, gonna be in the semifinals this weekend, and I wanna commend, uh, head coach Matt Davis and his team for really a, a great season regardless of what happens, and I'm hoping they bring home a Division Two state championship. Um, they certainly have had a great year. Uh, I would be much remiss if I, being a hockey fan like Counselor Rothaus and I, and Counselor Dwyer, that, you know, behind every good team is you need to have a good goaltender, and they have a really good senior goaltender in Matt Brewster who leads Division Two hockey with the best goals against average in Division Two with a one-point-two-four. That ain't too shabby. So, I, uh, wanna wish the boys a lot of luck, um, as they move forward. And secondly, uh, this past Friday, it was alluded to earlier, the, um, we had the gas leak on Friday night, but we also had a car fire and an, and an electrical odor or electrical fire, all three things going on simultaneously, which really, uh, brought our fire department to the, to the challenge, and they absolutely not only rose to the challenge, but they exceeded, exceeded it, and, uh, I, I wanna thank the men that were on duty that night, those picking, you know, picking up the slack, you know, behind afterwards, Chief Courier and, and to his team. That was a very trying night for the department.
Challenging.
Very challenging, and, um, of course, Chief Courier would just probably tell us that's just a day at the office for them, and that's certainly true. So, I just wanna, tough night, tough night for the fire department, but I wanna thank them for coming through and, uh, really doing a, a great job with, uh, what was presented to them.
I spoke to the chief. It was not a day at the office.
I, well, okay, I, I probably shouldn't put the chief, use, use the chief's name in advance, so I apologize, Chief Courier.
They were up to the challenge, but it was not a day at the office.
But thank you very much. It was, it did not go unnoticed, without a doubt.
Anyone else? Yes, Dan?
I'd like to just briefly thank, uh, all the candidates, whether they're incumbents or people who have run before offices, for all the people who stood, stood up this year and put their name in for running. As many of us know, uh, it's kind of, it can be a thankless job, but rewarding in a lot of aspects. I think that's why we're here. But I just appreciate the, the people who put their names in and, and made the commitment to, uh, run, and, um, a little disappointed on the school board side that nobody decided to do any work over there, but, uh, eight candidates, uh, is a, is a healthy number, and wish, uh, everybody, uh, the best of wishes, and thanks for volunteering.
Good. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Boyd, seconded by Counselor Mahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'm saying no, no nays.